I hereby call the special town meeting of December 7, 2020 to order. Is there a motion to nominate the moderator of the meeting?
I nominate Mary Ann Rosa as moderator of the meeting.
I'm going to ask for a second, although I know we don't need one. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, Ken Demers.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. I will read the warning and notice. The legal voters of the Town of Watertown and those entitled to vote in the town meeting are hereby warned and notified of a special town meeting to be held on December 7, 2020, at 6:30 p.m. to consider appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $256,410 for the Main Street roadway safety audit improvement project. The appropriation will be funded in part by a state grant to the town in the amount of $128,500 awarded under the 2020 Small Town Economic Assistance Program pursuant to the State of Connecticut Governor Ned Lamont's executive order number 7JJ and for the protection of the public health and safety during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Watertown Town Council will consider approval of the appropriation. Public comment will be received and considered prior to the vote by the Watertown Town Council. The meeting is conducted virtually and can be accessed via the link provided. Webinar ID 89304583. After registering, you will be prompted to choose your audio preference in order to speak at the meeting, and those wishing to listen only mode may dial 866-901-6455 and enter the PIN 604622429. If you require a translator or an accommodation for hearing impairment or other accommodation, please contact the Town of Watertown at 8609455255 dated at Watertown, the 20th day of November 2020. Right. We do need a moderator for the... A motion for the moderator for the meeting.
Well, yeah. I nominate Mary Ann Rosa.
I'm sorry. We need a motion for the clerk of the meeting.
I nominate Sue King as clerk of the special meeting.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that, please?
Robert DeSina, seconding that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, I assume, and we'll move forward to a motion.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $256,410 for the Main Street roadway safety audit improvement project.
Is there a second?
Second.
And who is that, please?
Rob Ratalick.
Thank you. Mr. Roy Kavanaugh, are you available to address this, please?
Roy Kavanaugh, Director of Public Works. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Roy Kavanaugh, Director of Public Works, here tonight to talk about the potential 2020 steep grant of roadway safety audit in the amount of $256,000. Walk you briefly through the project. Frank, can you show screen one? Frank, can you share screen one? Okay, for those of you who can see the screen, what we have here is an aerial photograph of Main Street in between Route 6, Veterans Hill, and French Street. The project comprised of three separate and distinct components. The first is the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at two locations. The first location is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. That would be in front of the library or the Rock Garden Cafe. The second installation of RRFB will be down further down Main Street to the west in front, approximately in front of Blue Uso. The third component of the project is the signalization improvements at the intersection of Woodruff Avenue and Main Street. This will comprise the evaluation of a signal, installation of a new signal head facing the convenience store gas station there, and signalization changes to accommodate a pedestrian crosswalk across Woodruff Avenue at Main Street to a new sidewalk. The third component would be the new sidewalk running westerly from Woodruff Avenue down to the new Starbucks and join in the existing sidewalk there. Going back to the signalization, the evaluation will be... An engineering design will be performed by Melona McBroom. They will evaluate the need for a new signal masthead and arm at that time. The RRFB design has already been performed by the engineering firm of Weston and Sampson, and the third component would be the design of the sidewalk on the Main Street section between Woodruff Avenue and Starbucks, and that will be performed in-house as an in-kind service by the engineering division. Frank, can you show the next slide, please? Frank, can we put the next slide up, please?
Trying. Can it go up?
Yep. Hello. Hello. Well, that's okay. Roy, why don't you just tell us what's on that second one?
Okay, the project is comprised of three different... There we go. The worksheet is up at the top of the worksheet. I broke down all of the three components. The first is the RRFB. The design has already been performed. The consultant estimated construction cost of $92,000, and there's $12,000 budgeted for contingencies and incidentals. Second component is the signalization of Woodruff Avenue or Main Street. The design has not yet been done or paid for, and it's $12,500 by Melona McBroom. They've estimated construction cost at $70,000, and we have a $12,000 contingency built in for a total component of $94,500. Sidewalk component of it, design will be in-house. Construction costs are estimated $92,500, and we have approximately $13,000 built in for contingency for a project total of $304,000. Of the $304,000, $128,200 would be covered by the steep grant. It should be noted that this is the maximum allowed under the program. The town has to match $128,205, and that will leave approximately $47,590 gap to be filled. We're proposing to fill the gap with $23,600 appropriation from the general fund. This is money which was appropriated for the RRFBs in the last fiscal year. However, we weren't able to do it, so that money would have to be brought back into this year's fund, and the balance would be approximately $23,990 taken out of a sidewalk line item. It should be noted that the construction costs are a little bit on the high side, and we built in contingencies and incidentals, which we feel will be sufficient for covering any potential shortages or overages in the design or the actual construction costs. All of this... All of the three components will have to be approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, both at Berlin and at the local level, and the permitting. We're anticipating finishing the design and the permitting this winter for construction, next construction season. At this time, I'll take any questions anybody may have with regard to this presentation.
All right. Let's start. Let's start with council people. Do any council members have any questions? I'm not hearing anyone. Is there anyone that's on the phone that we can't see on the monitor? If so, please let me know.
Yes, I'm on the... Anthony DeBona, I'm on the phone. I had some difficulty on before, so I am present, but I don't have any question.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any members of the public? Does anyone have any... Any question? No comments? No questions?
No one answering, hand raised.
Okay. Then we'll take a vote by the council members present. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh, you better tell me your name. I'll start. Mary Ann Rosa, aye.
Jonathan Ramsey, aye.
Can you go back? Frank, can you go back?
To what?
To the members present. Hold on just a minute, please. Okay. Rachel, did I hear you say aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Ken?
Ken's an aye.
Aye. Rob? Robert Tallik?
Aye.
Aye. Louis Roslin?
Aye.
Anthony DeBona?
Aye.
Missing. Herb DeSina?
Robert DeSina, aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Hearing is now closed. Or the special meeting is now closed. We have 15 minutes before the next meeting, which is a public hearing, and we will mute all attendees. You... Done, and we'll continue with the next public hearing.
Herb.
I'll call you on the cell. Come on, Louis. We can't talk.
I know.
Yeah.
We just gotta hang on for 15 minutes.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm calling the 7:00 p.m. public hearing to order on December 7, 2020. Do we have a nomination for moderator?
I nominate Mary Ann Rosa for moderator.
Is there a second?
Second, Ken Demers.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing non-nominations are closed. Do we have a motion for clerk of the hearing?
I nominate Sue King as clerk of a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Lou Raz is second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing non-nominations are closed, and Sue is the clerk of the meeting. I will read the call. The Watertown Town Council will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, December 7, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. to hear- at 7:00 PM to hear public comment on the sale of the Town of Watertown owned property known as the Town Hall Annex for 24 Main Street and the Town Hall 37 Forest Street. Please register for the Watertown Town Council Public Hearing. Webinar is ID 893045883. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the webinar. And those wishing to call in, listen only mode, dial 877-309-2074, PIN number 253837991. Anyone wishing to present written testimony may do so in writing prior to the hearing by emailing towncouncil@watertownct.org with "Public Hearing 12/7/2020" in the subject line. You may also present your testimony at the public hearing utilizing the "Go To" webinar option to raise hand. Your hand will alert the meeting organizer you wish to speak. Public hearing is accessible to persons with physical disabilities. If you require a translator or accommodation for a hearing impairment or other accommodation, contact the Town of Watertown at 860-945-5255. Date at Watertown, Connecticut is 25th day of November 2020. Mary Ann Rosa, Chairman, Watertown Town Council. Before we proceed for questions or comments, I would ask Attorney Paul Jessel if he would give us his comments in this regard.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The issue of the sale of the Town Hall and the Town Hall Annex actually came up in the budget in May of 2020. It was included in the budget and was actually discussed briefly at the budget public hearing on May 26. That budget was passed, as we all know, and the money from the sale of those properties is included in your budget today. Thereafter, the Town Council engaged the services of a commercial real estate broker who advertised the property. When bids were received, then we got multiple bids. The decision was made to advertise or sealed bids, which occurred. The sealed bids were received, the Town Council reviewed them, and actually awarded the bids at a meeting in November, November 16. Thereafter, it was brought to my attention that perhaps the public hearing that was held with regard to these property sales was not as effective as it could have been. So notwithstanding the fact that we did have something of a public hearing, and in fact the properties themselves were discussed at the May 26 public hearing, I recommend it to the Town Council that we have another public hearing, which is this hearing tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's start with the public to hear comments. Do we have a hand raised, sir?
Yes, we do.
Would you allow that person to identify themselves?
He's unmuted.
Mr. Mickel, is your hand raised? You can speak.
My hand's not raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what the...
Okay.
Moderator told us. Is there anyone that's wishing to address the council? Is there anyone with any questions? Are there any members... Um, there's someone?
Catherine Camera.
Ms. Camera, is your hand raised to speak?
She's currently self-muted.
You're self-muted, we understand.
Sorry, sometimes it says I'm unmuted and sometimes it doesn't. So Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place. I kind of missed a little of the beginning of this. Are we going to know what is proposed to happen at these locations with the purchases? Can you hear me?
I don't... No, I don't. I do not believe we are.
Okay.
There was actually submitted with the bid on... I'm sorry, if I might, Paul Jessel?
Right.
The bid for the Town Hall actually did have a proposal, a conceptual proposal, although the bidder has requested a 45-day due diligence period in order to determine whether the proposal is actually viable. There was no... As far as I'm aware, the bidder on the Town Hall Annex did not make a definitive proposal on what they were going to do with the property.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else indicating they wish to speak?
Alan Mickel, his hand raised again according to this.
According to this, Mr. Mickel, your hand is raised again.
I'm unmuted now. I've not had... My hand is red, pointing down. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Sorry to trouble you. Do any of our council members have any questions? Hearing none and no further input from the public will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Our regular council meeting will convene at 7:30. You do not have to sign off. You can stay on to have a 20-minute break.
Will there be music?
the Watertown Town Council for December 7, 2020 to order. It's a virtual meeting and I ask you to stand for a pledge of allegiance at home.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united in this whole liberty and justice for all.
We need to do a roll call of the town council members and please bear with me because I can't see everyone on the screen, so I'm going to have to ask you if you're present. Mary Ann Rose is present.
Jonathan Ramsey.
All right. Anthony Debona, are you present?
Yes, present.
Herb Dacina?
Present.
Rachel Ryan? Rachel is not present. Robert Tallick? I can see him.
Present.
Louis Raza?
Present.
And Ken Demers?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time in the meeting when we have public comment. Are you seeing anyone showing that they wish to speak to the council?
Catherine Camera is recently in.
Ms. Camera, are you there and wish to speak to the council?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
It's Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I've read the mission statement that you're supposed to review and possibly vote on, and I will, I'm hoping you will not accept that mission statement. I, it's, I don't think it's very strong. It's a little bit confusing. I've, I question why we would even talk about valuing our employees because I think that that's just something that is basically done. I don't know that it's part of a mission statement. I've never seen it in a mission statement, and it's also engaging schools is a very, very vague statement. I, I just think that it needs some polishing. I, I would hope that you would just table it. I don't see any urgency and have some people really look at that. I also want to say that the, I've been looking into the Watertown Housing Authority issue with the firing of the employees there and the hiring. I, I got some information that indicated that the hiring of property works is, is temporary or it's, it's interim. It's, it's pretty bizarre how that happened, and I looked at, I got information on property works, and I didn't see where their CHFA approved to do this type of work. So it's, it's kind of disturbing to me that this happened out of the blue, and as I understand it, there's, CHFA has, I can't think of the word right now. Anyway, there's, they're, they don't appear to meet the criteria at this time, so it's, it's just odd to me that they're interim, and then so are they interim because there's somebody coming in that's going to have these, what's required? It's, it's just very odd, and I will be looking into that, and I'm hoping that you are too, to understand what happened there. There's been very little comment about it. There was nothing said before it happened. There's really been nothing said by the town after it happened. So, and lastly, my comment about the meeting at Planning and Zoning last week, or yeah, last Wednesday, for several meetings now on the agenda has been an application by Eric Markowitz. Ken Demers has recused himself each time, but David Pope has not. So, the, the problem with not having public participation at the end of a meeting is that you see something happen and you can't say anything. So at the next opportunity, I tried to speak about it. Mr. Antonetti was up and down my back about speaking out of turn, but, but I was trying to make the point that this keeps happening, and I said that Dave Demers is in business with the applicant, and he said he's not, but he's employed by him, which I think that's worse. This would mean somebody's going to vote on an application of their employers. Now, if there's anyone who cannot see, that's a conflict, then you should be ashamed of yourself because it's a clear conflict. I also know that he's a managing member of an LLC called Platt Road, which is Ken Demers, Eric Markowitz, and David Pope's LLC. It's on the Secretary of State website. It concerns me that we have a council member who would be aware of this issue and said nothing, and I think that's a real problem. So, I'm putting that out there to the council, and I think you should really consider what I've witnessed at a meeting and what I'm telling you I've seen, because I know that no one else, and I don't believe anybody else from the town council had participated in that or was aware of it. So I would appreciate it if you would consider what I'm telling you, because it was, it's unethical. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else indicating they wish to speak, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay, we're not showing anyone else on the computer that's indicating they wish to address the council, so we'll close public comment, and we need a motion for the minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, November 16, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second, I just seen a.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any council member objecting or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Under the chair's comments, we have the resignation letter from Paulie Rinaldi, a longtime member of the council, sad to hear that due to health reasons he has to leave the council. We wish him well, and certainly we will be recognizing his service as well as service of others to the council, once the COVID restrictions lift a little bit. We've had a few emails to the town council email address. We have responded to those, and I believe all the individuals should have had all their questions answered. Some had to do with the purchase, purchase of the properties, which we discussed earlier tonight at our special meeting, and another one had to do with an item coming up on the agenda, having to do with approving an architect. I've responded to that, and I believe our discussion at the time of the item on the agenda will answer questions for the public. So we'll move on to the town managers' report, if you would. Mr. Ramo.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and council members. I have a few notes here. I hope that I don't bore you, but just over the last few weeks, today I spoke at the Pearl Harbor Day Memorial Service hosted by the Oakville VFW Post 7330, which was attended by many, many members of our community. I would like to thank our Parks and Rec Department for all the hard work they do to make these events seamless. Also a thank you to the Watertown Police Honor Guard who represented our town at the memorial service and did a great job. We were in the process of coordinating with the governor's office a COVID-19 testing site. Department heads are in the process of completing an operational plan that could be used for this operation, as well as any similar operation moving forward from here. Dates are to be determined, and at this point, we are anticipating at least two test dates in the near future. Just for some department advisements or requests, the budget schedule will be posted this month on the website for public view. The Park and Recreation Commission has sent a letter to the town council requesting that they follow up with a commitment made by the Sealy Mattress Manufacturing Company regarding the Oakville Green Fencing and Property Line. Without objection from the council, I will draft a letter to Sealy renewing an effort to that commitment. I've implemented a Town of Watertown COVID-19 policy which addresses health protocols for our facilities, our employees, and leave time, including notification of response in regards to COVID-19. We've begun distribution of iPads for council members and are working on implementation of the iPads. We have made several trial runs with the Zoom platform for virtual meetings. IT personnel has determined this is to be a more user-friendly platform, and it will be implemented this month. In your packet, there are three illustrative examples of a mission statement. I am respectfully requesting that the council consider adopting the specific wording and not be distracted by the illustrations. Adopting this mission statement will become a guiding document for the town of Watertown, and more particularly for those employed and serve our town. Traditionally, when creating a mission statement, a committee is created to do this work for the organization. This particular mission statement, although not created by a committee, has been approved by the department heads and the union presidents, with the understanding that if we adopt it and the council approves, we can then set up focus groups to get a deeper sense of the feelings of our community citizens, and then if needed, we could realign the mission statement with those. with those feelings of the community. Grants. While looking through grant opportunities, identified a grant offered by the state of Connecticut for emergency management. I collaborated with Dave Bromley, our emergency management director, and we have applied for a 50% reimbursement for his salary as well as an additional two Kenwood Viking radios that will be used by his office at a 100% reimbursement. Additionally, in the budget year 2021, if his office adopts an EMPG, Emergency Management Plan, we will be entitled to an additional $5,000. EMD Bromley intends on adopting that plan, which would make us eligible for the additional $5,000. Total possible grant award is upwards of $10,000 over the two budget cycles. We've hired a building official, Jeffrey Biello, accepted the position of Building Inspector on 11/23/2020 with a starting date of late December. Mr. Biello is a well-qualified building inspector, and he is a Watertown resident. Retirement. I would like to announce the retirement of Patricia Conti, our Animal Control Officer, after completing 30-plus years of service to the Town of Watertown. Congratulations, Pat. We have a couple of open positions. One is, of course, the impending retirement of Chief John Vivalas. I will be asking the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association to manage the selection process for Chief Vivalas' replacement. They will be responsible to conduct the interview, grade the candidate, and make a recommendation to me. I will be keeping the process in-house. In other words, I will not be accepting any outside applications for the chief of police. I will keep you informed as we move forward. The position of Animal Control Officer being vacated by Animal Control Officer Patricia Conti. We've advertised for these, for applications. We've received them, reviewed them, and interviews are scheduled. Our intention is to put a new Animal Control Officer in place before Animal Control Officer Conti retires. We've also posted a laborer's position in the Public Works Department. It will be open to the public and posted on our website on Thursday. I'm very happy and excited to announce that we are going to implement social media, the implementation of a social media page of the Town of Watertown, which would be coordinated with economic development and park and recreation so as to not duplicate effort unintentionally. Some of the content that we will consider is Merchant Monday, which would highlight area businesses, introduction of a townwide takeout night for a restaurant, Throwback Thursday, which can include some historical pictures and data about our town, Meet the Staff, which I would think would be very appropriate so that we could welcome our new assessor and building official, and then town-specific updates, examples of COVID-19 updates, statistics, road closures, things of that nature. Our staff, Lauren Laporta and Joe Seacrest, our Economic Development Coordinator, will meet up with Santa in the upcoming week to safely visit some of our local businesses. While out at our businesses, they will tame video footage that will be used to launch our new Facebook page. I'm hoping that we'll get a nice return from our citizens and business owners. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. We'll move on to New Business. Item A is Appointments to Boards and Commissions. We have a lengthy list.
I'll apologize in advance if I mess up anyone's names.
Why don't you take your mess?
I move to appoint Sally Custis, 945 Bunker Hill Road, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 2023. This appointment is to fill the vacancy.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah, we got to do them one at a time. Do we have a second? Council members, do we have a second?
I can, Anthony Devone.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I move to reappoint Michelle Wallace, 25 Elmhurst Lane, Oakville, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second, Anthony.
Do we have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Heather Chance, 14 Seymour Street, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second, Anthony.
Anyone have any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Erica Lafferty-Gerbattini, 33 Hart Street, Watertown, as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Jamie Russ, 80 Gilbert Road, Watertown, as an alternate member of the Police Commission to fill the vacant position from Jamie Lambo for a term to expire January 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have a question or a comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Jeff Desmaris, 294 Neil Drive, Watertown, as a member of the Public Building Committee for a term to expire January 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any question or comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Jim Liner, 110 Woodbury Road, Watertown, as a member of the Public Building Committee for a term to expire January 2024.
Is there a second? Can I hear one? Does anyone? Thank you, Anthony. Anyone have a question or a comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Mark Guerrero, 136 Oak Drive, Watertown, as a member of the Public Building Committee for a term to expire January 2024.
Is there a second? All those, anyone have a comment or a question? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Jean King, 126 North Street, Watertown, as a regular member of the Watertown Historic District Commission for a term to expire January 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Does anyone have a question or a comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Salvatore Torenzo, 215 Claxton Ave., Watertown, as a council for a term to expire January 2023.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second.
Anyone have a comment or a question? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Zaga Antonetti, 397 Kimberly Lane, Watertown, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 2026. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by George LaCabra Jr.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Caterina DeVito, 106 Pine Ridge Drive Extension, Oakville, as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 2025. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Zaga Antonetti.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second again.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Michael D. Buckley Jr., 106 Beach Avenue, Watertown, as a member of the Board of Tax Assessment Appeals for a term to expire January 2025.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second on that, too.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Robert Kane, 59 Caff Circle, Watertown, as a member of the Watertown Library Board of Trustees with a term to expire September 2021. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Nene C. Mann.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And last but not least...
I move to appoint Carmine J. Verno, 127 Smithtown Road, Watertown, as a member of the Watertown Housing Authority for a term to expire January 2026. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Mark Ramos Sr.
Is there a second?
Just seeing a second.
Does anyone have a question or a comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Item B on the agenda, New Business. Do we have a motion?
I move to set a virtual special town meeting to be held on January 4, 2021, at 7:15 PM to consider appropriation in the amount of $142,812 for compensation to Watertown Administrators Union for 20 additional days beyond their 215 contractual working days for COVID-19-related work.
Is there a second?
Mayor's second.
Thank you. I understand we have Leslie Crowdey and other board members and board administrators with us. Leslie, would you like to say anything?
I would, thank you. We have Lisa Jones here, our business manager here for John Ramos. For those of you who haven't met our new business manager, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Jones. She is here this evening. And I want to thank Diane Bristol, our board finance chair, for being here this evening. Lisa?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for that introduction, Chair Crowdey. It is indeed a pleasure to meet everyone and be here before you this evening. We have the agenda item, looking to request an appropriation of the $142,812 for those additional days that the board administrators work in preparation for the opening of the school year. Without them coming in, putting in that time, ensuring that the buildings were set up to accommodate students once they came back, we really would not have been able to open and have a successful opening at the start of the school year. So we're thankful for their efforts, the time they put in, and, you know, ensuring that the buildings are safe and the students, as well as the staff, had the protective gear and things that were necessary in order for the schools to open at that time.
So I would just like to add, Madam Chair, that you'll notice on the breakdown that was forwarded to town council members, the contract for the administrators includes up to five additional days beyond their 215, which we had already budgeted for. So instead of asking for the 25, it's just the 20 at the per diem rate.
Right. And this motion is to set a town meeting so we can go into detail as to exactly what was done during that time that they worked at the hearing or at the meeting for the public. Do any council members have any questions? All those in favor of setting the special town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone object? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Leslie and Lisa and Diane for attending. We appreciate your time.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item C on the agenda.
I move to adopt the mission statement as presented.
Do we have a second?
The mayor's second.
Are there comments or questions?
I do.
Again, Mary.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Rachel.
I would like to take a little bit more time to think about the statement and perhaps work on some of the wording. I think it could be improved. To me, it reads more like a vision statement rather than a mission statement. I think we might want to have a vision statement and then a mission statement about what we would do specifically. But I'm not in favor of the way it is worded currently.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My comment, Anthony Devone, is just that. And I think the town manager mentioned this, that these are three different versions of the, or visual versions of it. And we were to disregard that for the purpose of today, is that correct?
That's correct. And I believe in his manager's remarks, he also said that there could be further discussion about this if it was passed this evening. Does anyone else have any comment?
Further discussion as to the wording or as to how it looks?
Certainly, how it looks would have to be determined, but also the wording, yes. Could be expanded upon. And how we would publish it or use it would certainly come into discussion. Hearing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Was that you raising them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I abstain.
And one abstention by Jonathan. I believe the motion does pass. Item D on the agenda?
I move to approve the Crestbrook Golf Course rates and fees for 2021 as recommended by the Watertown Park and Recreation Commission.
Is there a second?
The mayor's second.
I believe the Park and Rec Director, Lisa, is with us. Am I correct, Lisa? It's kind of hard to tell. Lisa, are you there?
Yes. Dave, can you hear us?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
The Chair of the Mission and the Chair of the Subcommittee are also here.
Okay. Do you have any comments you want to make before we address approval of these fees?
This is the first rate increases that we've had in over four years. It's about time. And it rides the dovetails of... It's about time, and it rides the dovetails of one of the best revenue years that we've ever had. Looking forward, we also had an increase of 23 membership passes this year. So with what we've done in the past, it has set the foundation, and now we're building on it. That's why we're proposing rate increases in certain areas. The only area that we're not proposing any kind of increase is the golf carts, because we did that last year. So finally, we're, you know, we put off a couple of years trying to build a business back from the debacle 10 years ago when they decided to balance the budget by raising the rates by over 40% and lost more than 50% of the memberships up there. Took a long time for the people to stop forgetting that, and now with the comments that we're getting about the condition of the course and the way things are going at the course, we've stepped in that positive direction. The COVID definitely helped the golf course. A lot of things that were closed down, people needed a place to vent, people to go out and use their energies, and the game of golf benefited highly from it. And as it looks right now, even with the vaccine on the horizon, that next year is going to start out COVID. We did lose four to five weeks when we had the initial shutdowns in the state of Connecticut with COVID, then preparing the golf course so that we were effectively, and more than effectively, we were spot on about making sure that any and all COVID-related items from the governor on down through our interim town manager, Pete Kavala, were followed, and we had no problems with anybody at the golf course or anybody connected with the golf course in COVID-19. So I'm happy to report that in a bad sense, COVID was worse for the town of Watertown, but it benefited golf.
Very good, thank you. I assume you publish your, your schedule where, online?
Once approved, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. John, can you have a question?
You guys mentioned that COVID actually helped the golf course this coming spring. Once again, we're still going to be in the middle of it, it'll probably help this coming year as well. Do you foresee that increase in participation continuing for future years, or do you think it'll kind of start dropping off again when life goes back to whatever normal is?
No, I foresee a steady increase now, because we brought up a lot of golfers this year. First of all, I've mentioned about coming back to the course, primarily because of the shape that the course was in, and our rates are now competitive with a lot of other courses. And we saw an influx of a lot of new golfers, people that didn't know we were here. Now, it's the old adage, if you don't know that it's there, you won't go. So next year, here, I'm probably looking at some more increase in marketing to get us down there, because the new people that we had show up and repeat people. That's what we're looking for. When we see somebody wants, that's fine. It's when you see them a second time that you know you did a good job, and you've got a chance to keep them there. Now, we're looking at increases now. Like I said, for the first time in a while, we've had an increase in the memberships, and we had some of those people, people that came back, went to other courses for a while, and now we're seeing that Crestbrook is offering the best value for the buck in the game of golf in this area.
Anyone else have any questions? All those council members in, in favor of the rates as presented to us, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? They pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of move on. Item D or E, sorry.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $10,000 to be performed by Chankaski Humes Architects LLC for space needs assessment and site evaluation for the Watertown Community Center.
Is there a second? Hello? Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Like an expert.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, I'd like a brief explanation.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a brief explanation for the record.
Only just exactly what it says. We're asking for a study for space and site for a potential recreation center.
Good, Chair. Can I assume this is very similar to what was done with the town hall for all the different town departments? Now, this is just a scaled-down version for what they would need.
This is more in line with what was done for the police, new police station, and potentially the concept of could they be done on the same site?
Madam Chairwoman, it's Mark Ramos. Would you like me to give you a little synopsis of what we're asking for?
Thirdly, that would be helpful, yes.
Okay, I have something written out here. Jakunski Humes Architects will conduct a space needs assessment at a cost of $8,000 and a site evaluation at a cost of $2,000. The space needs and site evaluation study is just the first step in providing us with the information we will need to move forward with the buildings of a new community center, which will be utilized by all our seniors as well as our youth for community activities. Just as you, if you review your handout, there are several points in regards to this study. It really looks at the anticipated growth needs over a 20-year period, the future needs for our community center programs and functions, ADA requirements, internal security needs, parking for public, and it goes on and on. It's just in addition to what we've already discussed about putting a police department in, including now looking at the opportunity of maybe combining a community center with a police department on that property. But again, this is just a needs assessment.
Anyone have any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the money for the study, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $56,750 to the town hall project.
Okay, it should, it should go on to say the funds have been received from an energy incentive grant associated with the town hall project from Eversource. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Anyone have any questions?
Anthony DeBona, brief, for the record.
What is it you want to know?
I don't know if the town manager can give us a synopsis like he did on the last line item, just for the record.
It's an energy incentive grant for the town hall.
Madam Chairwoman, would you like me to give you a little explanation on this?
Okay.
It's basically a letter of agreement between the town and Eversource that was entered into with sitting town manager, Robert Skinnerl. So it's an agreement that we had put in place back in June of 2018. So the $56,000 plus is just being awarded back to the town as the agreement was written.
Anyone else have a question? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item G.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $2,770.35 for postage at the town hall. Funds received from the return of a postage machine due to consolidation of machines.
Any questions, comments? And we do need a second though, first. You have a second?
Second, Anthony DeBona.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please, sorry. Yes, Rachel?
I just had a question. I guess I'm just a little confused with what, what is meant by the return of a postage machine due to consolidation of machines? So we just, we didn't, we had an extra machine and we didn't need it or something?
It would sound...
The Chair, Suzanne, Finance Director. When we all moved to this building, we all had our own postage machines, one at the annex, one at the town hall, and they had one here. So now we only have one, but we had to turn the others in, and it had postage on it, so they returned the postage to us.
Oh, got it.
We have one machine now for this building instead of three.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $1,500 for police department training programs. Funds received from donation from the Watertown Lions Foundation.
Is there a second?
We have a second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $3,325 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second, Anthony DeBona.
Thank you. Anyone have a question or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Motion passing unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Anyone have a comment, question? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and we are now adjourned. Thank you for coming. Stay great.